All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Arthur Powell of Travelers Rest Baptist Church in Rex. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance and we're going to ask our veteran of the month to lead us in pledge of allegiance, Mr. Herman Turner. If you would, please stand with me.
Hey Pastor Powell.
Hey. Can we get the prayer in a song, sir? In the prayer in a version of a song.
If you do the song. Shall we pray? Father, we're grateful for yet another chance and another opportunity to meet and to discuss the business of our county. Pray your presence in this meeting tonight that you would have your way. But we thank you for what you've done and what you are doing in all of our lives. We commit this meeting to you. We commit our lives to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 1st, 2022 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Any board members want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, if we can take item 18 separately, which is 2022-20.
All right, please place item 18 as requested on the regular agenda. Any others? All right, I ask for a motion to approve or to adopt the agenda. There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our first order of business, well, our next order of business of presentation is the veteran of the month.
All right, our veteran of the month, who is well-known and probably don't need an introduction, but it is retired Sergeant Major Herman Turner. Retired Sergeant Major Herman Turner was the Chief Maintenance Sergeant for the 449th TASG, not familiar with that is, but at Fort Gillum Forest Park, Georgia. As a Chief Maintenance Sergeant, his responsibilities range from fundamentals of maintenance administration, quality management, inspection visits, training, and safety. Turner, a native of Pine Mountain, Georgia, was drafted into the Army, the United States Army, on July 9th, 1969, and completed basic training at Fort Benin, Georgia. Retired Sergeant Major Turner served as a wheel vehicle mechanic in the 278th General Supply Company in Fort Devers, Massachusetts, from September 1969 to August of 1970, and a number of other positions throughout his tenure until he retired as Sergeant Major in the 81st U.S. Army Reserve Command in 1996. His professional military education includes the Basic Advanced Non-Commissioned Officer Course, Wheel Vehicle Maintenance Course, three maintenance management courses, and first Sergeant Course. His awards and decorations include Bronze Star Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, as well as the Army Overseas Service Medal, ribbon rather, and the Marksmanship Medal. He also earned the Armed Forces Reserve Medal and USAR Achievement Medal. Retired Sergeant Major Turner is heavily involved in his community and church. He serves as a deacon and as the chairman of the trustee board at New Macedonia Baptist Church. He is a member of the Elijah Summit Massaminic Lodge 309 in Jonesboro. He is currently the chairman of the zoning advisory group in Clayton County and organizer of the MLK Parade for over 20 years. He is married to his wife Patricia of 49 years and the father of two sons. Please help me recognize and honor retired Sergeant Major Herman Turner. (applause) I'm going to come forward, sir, and if you have any family members, feel free to bring them.
Clayton, Claywater Commissioners recognize Charlton Vivins, Georgia Recreation Parks Association District Four Outstanding Volunteer Award and State Volunteer of the Year Award. Whereas Charlton Vivins has been a part of the Clayton County community for over 34 years. Vivins is a Tulane University and Clayton State University graduate with Bachelor of Science degree in organizational leadership and father of five children and a grandfather of 14 grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Vivins is a retired law enforcement administrator, serving for more than 30 years with experience in law enforcement training and criminal record management via the Georgia Bureau of Investigations. He is the author of several training recruitment programs and instructional guides in law enforcement leadership. And whereas since his retirement in 2014, Mr. Vivins has reprogrammed his law enforcement philosophies and is now a criminal justice reformist, a huge lobbyist and advocate against mass incarceration, criminal justice reform and supports creative law enforcement community training. He is the founder of Ask Charter Consulting, a company that serves the community by providing criminal record investigation services, criminal record inspugment services. He assists ex-felons with job opportunities and state pardon assistance. And whereas Mr. Vivins stands by the mantra of being addicted to serving disadvantaged children, in the spirit of serving disadvantaged children, what better place could Mr. Vivins be than to serve children through his affiliation with Clayton County Parks and Recreation Board? And whereas his love for cycling, as he leads the Seaport Clayton County Cycling Club, is a venue of fun, safe cycling experiences, and a platform to give back to the community. Seaport Clayton County Cycling Club teaches children safe biking habits. They also donate bikes, create fun fitness, and create a youth cycling club team and more. Through this effort, he and the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department partnered with Clayton County Board of Health to gain 20 helmets for children who enjoy cycling. And whereas Mr. Vivins is a servant leader to include but not limited to a co-founder of Clayton County Concerned Citizens, a previous Clayton County Board of Education member, a co-founder of Men Standing in the Gap 2.0, a 2010 recipient of President Barack Obama's Presidential Volunteer Service Award, in recognition for men standing in the gap, the Clayton Henry County Salvation Army Advisory Council Chairman, also Clayton County Department of Family and Children's Services Advisory Council as Vice Chairman, State of Georgia DFAX Association Representative, the Atlanta Regional Commission Board Representative, Clayton County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Chairman, and Arts Clayton Board Arts Gallery Arts Educational Programming. Now therefore, I, Chairman Jeffrey E. Turner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, honor Mr. Charlton Vivins for his dedication and commitment as an outstanding public servant and Clayton-connected community advocate. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of February 2022.[597.82][597.82](applause)
Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. The speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not use any disparaging remarks or abusive language. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, and my name is Ms. Russell. I put Ms. Brown, but I will not live in fear of what can happen to me. Now, I've called Code Enforcement, I think it was in this 2022, so it was 2021, in reference to some things going on in our neighborhood. And if I could, I don't have too many copies, but I would like for you all to see this. We have a junkyard, salvage yard going on. Prior to this, I had called the county in 2018. I went and sit in the court proceedings. The person was told he had to move the trucks, the transfer trucks, the trees where he allowed people to come in and dump the trees. He had to remove debris and all this other junk in the back. There are houses, this is a community. There is no water back there, but yet he burns. Now, I guess he's been doing it for years. I've been back there since 1994. But when a person feels that they don't have a voice, they don't speak, and I was one of those. But I've got a voice, and I don't want to live like that, and I don't have to. Now, we got a street. It's only 15 and a quarter feet wide, ditches on both sides. Everybody has a driveway. Like myself, you can get five cars back to back. You might not want to get up and move your car when somebody want to get out, but that's the choice you make. Now, I don't want to drive in a ditch when cars are parked on the side of the road, especially when they are parallel to one another. I've seen the garbage collectors come down the streets. I've seen the county come down. The reason I know, because I'm always calling Refuge Control. They're always coming to my house to pick up debris and different things on the side of the road. So I asked them one day, why you got your truck parked like that? Why don't you go and tell the people to move? But I'm okay. I'm not okay. I'm not going to drive in a ditch if I don't have to. The dogs, somebody letting the dogs out again, pit bulls, everything else.
Sorry ma'am, but your time is up. Did you say that you may, hold on a second ma'am, did you say you made contact with Code Enforcement and they did, or you have not responded?
I said, when I made contact with them last year, they asked me a series of questions again, because every time I called, and I know Chairman Turner, this to be true, I called and I gave a different name. The person said, well, hold on, let me go and check with my, I don't know, she said boss manager, whatever. She came back to the phone. She said, he said Ms. Russell, a lady by the name of Ms. Russell, called and said she was going to fill out some forms to have the street widened. Why would he tell my name? It's not the first time.
I understand what you're saying. If you would, I would like for you to get with Ward Nelson, who's right here to the right. He is in charge of Code Enforcement and Refuge Control. Please share that information with him so he'd be able to have a talk with his staff.
But do you all understand how I feel?
Yeah, you're Ellwood, right?
Yes, I am.
Yes, Ellwood, District 1 area.
So do you all really understand how I feel?
Well, we understand that you have some concerns, but we can't understand how you feel because we're not in that position. But we're going to get down to the bottom of it.
I appreciate it.
That we will do. Just get with the warden, he will talk.
Ma'am, you can also email Judge Wright Hill, send this and send this to her, the information that you gave us, you can email Judge Wright Hill and send it to her, okay? All right, thank you.
Charlton Vivins.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, and Administrators. My name is Charlton Vivins. I live, serve, and play in unincorporated Jonesboro. I was selected by this board to serve on the Department of Family and Children's Services Advisory Board. Thank you. Behind me are other DFAX board members. They were selected by you from the different districts. Our role is to advocate, monitor, and solicit human services and resources for the families of Clayton County. I'd like to explain what that really looks like. DFAX is the largest human services organization in the state of Georgia, if you didn't know. And absolutely, it's the largest in Clayton County. You are typically probably familiar with the Child Protective Services Division, but DFAX is so much more than that. DFAX is so much more than that. DFAX is a leader in foster care parenting. DFAX is a leader in kinship care, and kinship care is a program of keeping children in their families by training and supporting grandparents and other family members to raise those children or those grandchildren. This is but one of several reunification services that we provide. Our reunification programs aim at keeping the child at home either through extensive parenting support or child stability support. Clayton County DFAX is a liaison for the state of Georgia to Clayton County as it relates to family support. Number one, we manage the SNAP program, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance, better known as food stamps or the EBT system. We also have a comprehensive adoption program when all else fails. DFAX works tirelessly with Clayton County Public Schools and private providers in after-school programs, and we have an EPAC unit, now I have to go through that, Educational Programming Assessment and Consulting Unit. This unit assists and supports academic institutions with academic excellence programs for children in the DFAX system. Sometimes their needs are a lot different from the normal child. We manage our TANF program. Our TANF program, that is our robust financial assistance program, as well as Medicaid is processed through DFAX. This is merely a snapshot of what Clayton County DFAX Office is doing for our community. We want to thank you all, and this community should thank you all for supplementing DFAX with grant funding from the Commissioner's Community Service Block Grant. The state is in no way gives this organization the funding we need to serve our community, and the block grant fund definitely fills the gap. Again, on behalf of DFAX Board and the family and children involved, we want to say thank you in advance for your continued support.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Boone.
My name is Carolyn Boone. I am a proud member of the Clayton County Board of Trustees. I would like to take a few minutes to inform the public of the many ways that they can support the Clayton County Library System. We all know that social media plays a critical part in the daily interaction. One primary method of advertising the library uses the various social media. Support your library by following, liking, and sharing posts on whichever social media platform that you interact with most. A simple event share or retweet makes all the difference in bringing awareness to all the library system is doing to support its citizens. Volunteering is another way you can support our library. Please contact your branch about volunteering opportunities. Clayton County Library System is always excited to form new partnerships with businesses to support our community. Businesses can support the library through grants, in-kind services, material donations, and by volunteering to offer free programs to the public at the library. These efforts must be coordinated through the library director. For more information, please contact your library headquarters. To learn more about the Clayton County Library System and how you can help us to continue to provide many programs and services we offer to the community, please visit our website at clayton.org. You can also follow us on all social platforms by searching the Clayton County Library System. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mickey Garber.
Let me read to you a little something. Timeline, 2019, Board of Commissioners to the Legislature for Pay Increase. Legislature denied it. 2018, Jeff Turner, Chairman, your base salary $126,265. Commissioners, base pay $20,202. February 18th, 2020, Consent Agenda. You approved ordinance 2020-31. Proposed increase for Commissioner Turner, $143,760. The Commissioners, $35,600 compensation for full-time, part-time job. Chairman Turner, you receive $5,000 a year for expenses. Commissioners, you receive $3,000 a year for expenses. Your new salaries effective January 1st, 2021, Chairman Turner, you received a raise of 14%. Board members received 76% raise. I'm not saying you do not deserve the raises. I'm saying that our first responders, police, all departments, fire, all departments, sheriff's departments, and corrections deserve more than the bone 5% you are throwing them. All of these departments protect and serve with their lives and limbs. They are the best of the best. They deserve to be paid the best, at least in the top 10% of pay in the 22-county metropolitan area, not in the next to the bottom in pay. I expect these public servants to be hired from the populace of the county. I expect them to live in this wonderful county. I expect them to spend their entire careers in this county. I expect them to retire from this county. In order for me to expect this from them to do these things, they expect me, they expect us, to pay them a livable wage to feed themselves and their families. Do any of you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Ms. Carol Yancy.
I'm here about our public safety and health and the dire need for our first responders, police, and fire staff to receive not only the full 23% pay increase originally requested, but additional 17% for the high health benefits that they pay, totaling 40% versus the incremental increase, not to exceed 10%. In the midst of a pandemic, residents losing their jobs and high eviction, this board approved themselves a 76 pay increase without public presentation, cost analysis, and justification. You slipped it in the consent agenda. Our first responders are the backbone, the heartbeat, and pulse of this county, always readily available to engage and meet the citizens where we are to respond, address, and resolve our concerns and problems in a professional, respectful, caring manner with integrity, in spite of them being fatigued, understaffed, underpaid, and unappreciated by this board, constantly sacrificing their lives, health, and time with their family. Sadly, I can't say the same about y'all. Instead, all we get is appearance, all show, no substance, just propaganda, deflecting, projecting, falsehood, and self-serving dispositions. You all place high priorities on things, your friends that y'all consider consultants, partnerships, names of streets, buildings, new facilities, citizens over the well-being of the citizen continually undermining what backdoor techniques such as the tax assessor office inflating our property taxes to cover up the board's screw-up and not having a clear formulated plan for O&M expenses required for new facility once online. The citizens and first responders should not be penalized for you all's negligence and problems that you create and perpetuate by being a dysfunctional board resulting in mismanagement of our tax dollars, lack of servant leadership mindset, competency, accountability, transparency, integrity, and objectivity. Please give them what they deserve.[1716.01][1716.01](applause)
Timothy Bondell-Jefferson.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I left my mask on. I don't want people to know who I am.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners, Timothy Bondell-Jefferson, Unincorporated, Clayton County. I am coming before the board to address some issues, and basically, the purpose of this board, the purpose of this board is a policy-driven board, policies. Now, there are a lot of policies that passed in 2021, and I'm going to recall a few of them, but the policies had no vision behind a decision. Getting rid of Clayton beautiful without a justifiable reason and did not have a vision to follow up, to make the county whole. To mandate mandatory trash pickup with no plan in place... To mandate mandatory trash pickup with no plan in place, did not have a vision. Chairman Turner, you will be giving the state of the county address next month. And you do a wonderful job in tackling the wonderful things that we got happening in the community. We got about 3,000 single-family homes coming online, plus apartments we got, we're moving. GDOT is moving very slow, but they're getting there. Now, one particular project, as I've done research for my clients, is the Mountain View Project. The Mountain View Project was targeted by a former commissioner to integrate and hopefully win the Amazon deal, which was a falsehood. Now, we've spent $110,000 on a feasibility study on Mountain View. The county don't own the property. Why are we spending taxpayers' money on a concept that we don't even own? And I was doing my due diligence in researching the land bank authority. There are 12 parcels of land up for sale in Mountain View. That's an opportunity for us to seize that property because we were under lawsuit prior to that because we was misrepresentating the owners of that property. So as we make decisions, a public-private partnership would be wonderful, but we have got to do our due diligence. Not only we make these decisions, to have a backup plan and have a proper vision as we move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Drew Andrews.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Drew Andrews, Unincorporated, Jonesboro. Over the last about 10 days, Metro Atlanta has gotten to see the true character of Clayton County. I want to thank Commissioner Davis, Mrs. Davis, and the Friends of Clayton, who saw the need to find warmth for those who were sleeping out on the street. You know, we received notifications about bringing in flowers and our pets when it's extremely cold outside. But Lord have mercy, why not have a warm place for our human beings to go? And so, again, I want to thank Commissioner Davis and Mrs. Davis. I want to thank the Friends of Clayton County who donated their time, money, and their talent to help those who we refer to as the least of these, but they are our community. We see them every day. If you would speak to them, you would see that many were veterans who had no problems in sacrificing their time, their lives, their family to make sure we were safe and warm in our beds. There was a school teacher, one who worked here in Clayton County, fell on hard times. And then there's these young millennials. But we wouldn't know that unless we got to interact with them. So, moving forward, if we could please have some system in place where not only we bring in our plants and our pets, where we bring in human beings off the street. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now approve the consent agenda 1 through 17, 19 through 24.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on any other items? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
First item is item number 18, Ordinance 2022-20.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Of Ordinance 2022-20, an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part 1, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Board of Commissioners, to revise parliamentary procedures, to reestablish a finance committee, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
There is a motion on the floor, but I am going to ask that we separate the two. One does not have anything to do with the other. The board adopting the Roberts Rules of Order is definitely something we need to do. However, the second portion that is actually in the information that's not listed here totally in detail, which is what the majority of it was about, is something that needs to be discussed among this board so the board can have some input in it. And if it's the direction of the board to develop committees, then we need to decide what committees they are, how often they meet, who's on those boards. There needs to be more complete information.
Any other questions?
May I make a?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why that's in there is currently in Article, I'm sorry, Section 2-3610, which is part of the, for some reason, it was listed within your parliamentary procedures. It established a finance committee. By repealing that entire section, it would have taken away that portion. So all this did was move what's existing into a new section so it doesn't take what you already have on the books.
So you're saying that's already on?
It's already here, under 2-3610. And by repealing that entire section to establish the Roberts Rules of Orders as the parliamentary procedures, if we did not address that, then that would have been taken away as well.
And which, that's a great point. So that means we weren't even abiding by our own code. So again, that needs to be something discussed. So, my comment and questions, Dan, and then we'll.
All right. Can we finish? I'm sorry. Okay.
I don't have a question, but I wish we had put this on the work session.
Correct.
So we could discuss this.
Any other questions? All right, for me, it was real simple. We needed a set of rules in which to go by the rules, the parliamentary rules that we have now and is kind of piecemeal together to include some of the Roberts Rules of Order. And really, it was really, what more is there to discuss other than follow a set of rules that is Roberts Rules of Order?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to amend the motion to.
I made the motion, so you're not going to be able to amend it.
Okay. Well, I'm just telling my intent because you're making a stance as if both of them have to go together. I understand what Mr. Reed is saying, but this board has the ability to be able to move forward with adopting the Roberts Rules of Order, and that other section is just something we need to discuss. And so, we'll take a vote, and if how it comes out, I would like to amend the motion.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it fails. There is no other motion.
Yes, I would like to amend it, and I would like for the board to consider moving.
You would have to make a motion to adopt the ordinance minus the finance, to basically adopt the parliamentary procedures without adopting a finance committee.
That was my, that's what I was trying to get at. So do I need to wait until you say it, or Chair?
No, no, you can make that motion.
But it's going to be a new motion, it's a motion.
May I say something before you make your motion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Vice Chair.
What would that mean if we take out the finance part and just have the part with the Roberts Rules of Order?
In effect, you just will be removing that section from your ordinance now. So right now, you have a finance committee as part of your, as part of your code. If you repeal that entire section and only do Roberts Rules of Order, you will no longer have a finance committee. At this point, now you can always come back and do it again later, but as of today, you will no longer have a finance committee.
Correct. Because we, as way is stated, it's supposed to be two commissioners serving. We've not been doing that. That we've not been abiding by that. This board has not discussed who serves and the two. So my motion is that we adopt the Roberts Rules of Order under the section code, as you stated, under administration, however absent of the finance committee.
All right, is there a second?
I second that.
Probably move to second. Are there any other questions?
Again, not a question, but I really wish we would just hold this and discuss it in one of our work sessions.
The whole life and all of it?
Right, the whole thing.
Well, we can. That's not a problem.
You wanting to amend your motion?
I just withdraw my motion and we talk about it.
You can make a motion to just move Ordinance 2020 to your next work session, and then you all can discuss it and make any amendments at that time.
So moved. That's the bottom line. We could talk about it at the work session and everything.
So we can take a vote to move it to the.
To whichever work session you'd like to discuss it.
Now, the first upcoming work session.
You should need a second.
Is there a date?
That's the eighth.
Said the eighth?
Yes.
All right, so if I'm hearing correctly, Commissioner Franklin's motion is to move it to the work session for February 8th. Is it? Is what?
For discussion. For discussion.
For a discussion, yes, for discussion. Because we can't vote.
All work session items are for discussion. Second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a board appointment.
No, we have one miss.
I'm sorry, hold on, one more. Let me get that. Pam, you were supposed to be up. Next item is item number 25, which is the purpose of this request is to present a restructure of the Office of Solicitor to implement an effective structure and provide career path for the employees in an effort to minimize efficiencies and increase retention.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Chair, as well as Commissioners, and good evening Clayton County citizens. As Clerk James said, the purpose of the request is to present a restructure of the Office of Solicitor to implement an effective structure that provides career path for the employees in an effort to maximize efficiencies and to promote retention. With that being said, on behalf of the Office of Solicitor, Human Resources requests the following. Add Chief of Staff, Grade 34, Step 4. Total annual compensation is $114,307. Victim Services Manager, Grade 26, Step 8. Total annual compensation, $83,007. Victim Services Officer, Grade 18, Step 5. Total annual compensation, $56,477. Program Development Coordinator, Grade 26, Step 11. Total annual compensation is 83, I'm sorry, 85,864. And last, add Paralegal Senior, Grade 23, Step 4. Total annual compensation is $69,445. We're requesting to delete the following positions. Pretrial Manager, Grade 22, Step 15. Total annual compensation is $75,048. Victim Services Officer Senior, Grade 19, Step 6. Total annual compensation is $59,599. And last, delete Legal Assistant 2. Grade 18, Step 12. Total annual compensation, $6,0903. The budgetary impacts are as follows, BY22. There is a cost of $90,831. For Budget Year 23, the cost is $213,551.
Mr. Brooks is here. Would you like to add anything?
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Board. I would like to introduce a couple of numbers to the board. $4 million in fines and fees annually. About $250,000 towards the general fund from diversionary cases. $50,000 cases annually prosecuted. $6,000 cases pending arraignment right now. 600 cases pending trial. About 13,000 tickets pending, and another about 2,000 unaccused cases. Staff, when fully staffed, is about 40. Back in March of 2021, I engaged this board through the COO about budget flexibility and employee attrition back in March of 2021. Today, everything that I said has come to pass. And so, we are at a point where employee attrition is a problem. It's a real problem. And if we cannot increase our salaries to compete with our neighbors, then I cannot effectively prosecute cases. Law enforcement, God bless them, Chief Roberts, Sheriff Hill, Chief Deputy Boer, God bless them. They are first responders for this county. And they do a good job representing our county in law enforcement. But the other half of public safety is courts. So we can arrest, we can catch them, but if I can't effectively prosecute them, then we're going to release them. And that's not what we want for public safety in our county. I don't have the manpower because I don't have the budget or the budget flexibility. The last email that I tried to engage the board was September. At that point, I referenced that the attrition rate for my office was about 50%, 50%. I was elected by the citizens of this county to be the Solicitor General. I'm from this county, been in this county 30-plus years, and I want to do the very best job that I can for our citizens, for my family. But I can't do it if I don't have a budget. I can't do it if I don't have a budget. Public safety, their initial request was 23%. I think what the board gave was about 5%. What I need across the board, no less than 10%, no less than 10%. And I know that the retort or the response is that, well, we can't compete with Fulton County, we can't compete with DeKalb County, or we can't compete with Herring County because they got bigger tax bases. But we have to. We have to. Unless, unless this board is going to give me a budget to travel to these other outlier counties to recruit. But where we recruit from is the metropolitan Atlanta area. And so, we have to offer competitive salaries for the industry and for the region, and right now, we don't. We don't. These positions will allow us to streamline our process. One position particularly, Program Development Coordinator. That position is the person who directs our diversionary program. As I mentioned, that 250,000 annually, that's created from that position. And we have plans on expanding the capacity of the pretrial diversion program. So we need, we need to increase that position. Paralegal, this, our office does not have paralegals. In order to effectively move cases, a paralegal can do some of the things that attorney generally could under the supervision of an attorney. Right now, I move in, we move, like I said, about 50,000 cases with half the necessary prosecuting staff, with half the necessary prosecuting staff. We have two major prosecuting offices in Clayton County. You have the district attorney's office and you have solicitor's office. The large majority of crime is misdemeanor cases. The large majority of crime is misdemeanor cases. The solicitor's office only is funded by the county, only by the county. District Attorney's Office has state resources as well as forfeiture resources. So, the comparison between the two offices, there is no comparison because we're doing apples and oranges. Uh, what I'm asking this board is for these positions, but additionally, I'm asking that my staff, but public, uh, as far as the Solicitor General's office, as we move a large majority of the cases in the courts, a ten percent increase across the board. That's my ask. That's my desire to be the solicitor that the citizens hire me to be.
All right, thank you. That being said, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the Solicitor's General's, um, recommendation for the restructure of the department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Yes. Commissioner Hamper.
I don't have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate you, and you know I do, and I appreciate the program that you have in place. And what you have presented to us is a budget package. And if I'm not mistaken, are we in the middle of the budget now?
Uh, yes, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner, we just received the, um, budget request on Thursday, and we're actually just starting to go through those. So, we haven't gotten to here yet, so I'm not sure what he requested in his department as far as personnel.
And would this be the same type of presentation that would come to you all first before it gets to us?
Yes, ma'am. If he, um, requested additional personnel or restructures, it could be done through the budget process.
Okay. And while I appreciate, you know, the work you're doing and the numbers and all, and all the departments.
Yes, ma'am.
Are going through.
Absolutely.
The same kind of thing, you know, we got word, uh, what, a week or so ago, uh, a department director losing two people from two different areas of, uh, that department and all. And my thing is, let's go through the budget process. Let's, let's do that. We, if I'm not mistaken, back in September or sometime, you, the D A and the sheriff came to us for something, I think it was an emergency package or something that we passed.
No, no, ma'am.
Well, we did something.
It, it was, it was for, uh, salary, individual salaries, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and we, we did that.
Yes, ma'am. It was a supplement.
Right, and all. But my thing is, I, I'm, and I'm going to stand with this.
Yes, ma'am.
Our process is the budget process, and we're right in the middle of it now. And other than an emergency or something, which I think all the departments right now have emergencies and all, so. But, and again, all due respect and all, and you know, love working with you and all, but I, I just think we need to stick with our process.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I receive everything that you're saying, and I will offer that last year, we, we wanted to make this part of our budget, uh, budget request. However, last year FY twenty twenty, there were no budget hearings. It was only bud, budget allocation. Uh, this year, um, this year, there's been budget, uh, we did have budget submissions, and we did make submissions in our budget. And the original package that we wanted to present to this board was going to be much broader than what you see right here. Um, however, uh, we narrowed it, um, recognizing that the palette of the board might be a little bit more narrow than, uh, than, than what our package would, uh, offer. Um, so, as relates to the budget hearing process, um, our house is on fire, and I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put water on to keep, to keep the building from burning down. Um, and that's really what, I, I began this conversation back in March of last year. Uh, the last, that last email that I sent directly was in September of last year. And this is my, and in that email, I asked to speak before a work session, speak before a general body meeting, or, or, or call me. Whatever I needed to do at that time, this is my first time before this board to add to, to, to actually be heard about this issue. And so, that's why I'm asking that it get done today.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, the last year's budget discussions, there was a email or something that was sent out to ask everybody or anybody who wanted an audience to discuss the budget could come, come by and, uh, discuss it with finance. And I don't know apparently what happened as to why you were not granted or did not, uh, ask for a hearing. But neither here nor there. My question to you is the ARPA money. Were you granted ARPA money?
Yes.
And how much?
Uh, each department of the courts was given seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, you received seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
And what did you do with that money?
Still using it, uh, to the extent that we can, um, uh, to the extent.
It can be used for personnel, correct?
Uh, for contracts, yes. And, and I wanted to offer, uh, bonuses for attrition. I was told from the county that I couldn't.
But you can be, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam CFO. If they're working on extended cases, then could it or could it not be, be as a result of the COVID?
It could be overtime is what I was told.
That is correct, um, Mr. Chairman. If they are working on, um, extended cases, I know some of the other courts have hired additional personnel using those funds to help with the backlog that they have due to COVID, um, and with the courts being closed.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. Make sure I choose my words wisely here. I respect that there's a budget process. We, this board just heard a recommendation on what was already in place based upon our code and that budget process. This board has not even been following that code. The, what I'm hearing from this discussion and even the discussion we had to have with finance about who first responders truly are, it lets me know that we've got to go to the basics of order. And not only as a commissioner, but one that travels throughout the state and actually sits in classes. I would offer to this board that we are out of order. You should never have to go to staff that is going underneath operations. You are not a department. You are the office of the Solicitor General. It is the office of the sheriff. It is the office of the district attorney. Just because we do things in practice, it does not make it right. You should have never have been told, uh, that somebody was speaking on behalf of this board if it was never brought to this board. You, as an elected official and all the other elected officials, are able to bring whatever you want before this board for this board to vote it up and down, or down. That is your state constitutional right as an elected official. So, I tell you, first of all, what we have been doing is out of order, and it doesn't even follow our own county code. So, I do understand that you have been hemorrhaging, and I'm going to take a little leap because I know the person that came before you. And I had this conversation with her. Shame on y'all that y'all allow operations to be able to tell you as an elected official what to do and what you can bring before us. An email don't even suffice. So, I say that to say, I appreciate you as a person. I appreciate you as a leader, and it is up to this board to understand. You bring whatever you want before this board. And whether this board says yay or nay, then that's what we got to deal with. But no elected official is ever, ever bound to have to go through the operations portion of this county to have your budget looked at. So, I apologize to you. I apologize that for the last several years, you have been told something that did not come before this board as a vote. No one has the right to speak on behalf of this board unless the majority of the body has voted on it specifically dealing with budget. That's the number one purpose of this board. The one thing we're required to do as a board commissioners is to pass a balanced budget. So, I hear what you're asking, and I pray to God, if it don't pass today, you don't stop. And every elected official, hear me, bring it before us. Don't wait on no process of somebody to tell you. You bring it before us. Yes, sir.
And, and, um, Madam Commissioner, thank you for the support and the commentary. Um, I will offer this. Because, uh, my office, uh, as an elected official, I, I don't, I don't have, uh, control over the processes for moving finance, you, as you might expect. Or might, some might believe that we have the authority to, um, manipulate the budget the way we don't. Every, and I have to explain this to employees. Every budgetary request has to come before this board.
That's right.
Has come before this board.
That's right.
If I want to give a person a raise, I got to come before this board. I don't think that's appropriate because I'm boots on the ground and I know where, uh, operationally we are, but I have to come before this board. That handicaps me. Okay? Now, this board is a policy-based board. You create policies for all of the county. My position as Solicitor General, I'm both operational and policy. So, I create the policy for the office, but I also operationally know exactly, know exactly what's happening in the courts. And, and as relates to personnel.
And therefore, you know what you need.
And I know exactly what I need. And so, so the, the cruts of the email back in March was just that. I need, as an elected official, budgetary flexibility to move up and down as appropriate for the office. But I haven't heard anything.
I hear you.
Let me say that. Let me correct some misinformation. First of all, operations have never, ever, nor myself, told anybody they could not present anything before this board, first and foremost. If you had inaccurate or incomplete information, and it came through H R, H R worked with, works with each elected official, make sure that information is correct and accurate. Now, if there's ever a incomplete request, then it might, they, Ms. Ambles may have asked, are you sure you want to go for it? Because this board has, has, I'm not going to say chastised, but pointed out information that was incorrect or not thorough. So, I want to make sure that everybody understands and all elected officials know that you are never hindered from bringing anything before this board. I have spoken to operations over and over again, when an elected official wants to bring something, that they are to be placed on the, uh, work session and on any agenda. So, that definitely is misinformation that was just put out.
Uh, Chairman? Commissioner Davis.
I, I want to get back to what you're asking for.
Okay.
Yes, there needs to be some, a policy adjustment or change to begin to give you flexibility over your budget. I, I agree with that. Um, but when it comes just to this request, we're, we're making a mid-year, um, budgetary altercation here, which is going to impact the budget for the remainder of this year. Am I correct, Mr.? So, what is that budgetary impact is for me is what I want to know going forward from this, uh, this point on. I do like the fact that you are doing a reorg. The issue I have was that this reorg, as unlike the others that have come before us, have a budgetary impact. The last couple that came before us, I believe, had no budgetary impact.
And Commissioner, I, 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 I welcome your comments and thank you for them. Whereas other offices and departments have not had a budgetary impact, and in some cases created a budget savings. My understanding of savings is that it's reallocated to other departments where there's a need. I need, I have a need. I have a need.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
The mere fact that you all have to go through the process that you've been going through, as I stated before, is circumventing what should be happening as an elected official. So, I'm so glad you said that. And I would like to continue to find out what are truly the best practices and what are actually, not just the laws as a county, but throughout the state as to your, not just your, but any elected official having flexibility within their budget. I believe that's something that needs to be challenged, and I hear you clearly. But I think it's something that needs to be challenged because, again, we have had operations come before us with misinformation and not even making sure that we're doing what needs to be done. So, I just want to publicly say I agree with Commissioner, um, Davis. Elected officials do need to have that discretion. And it's not fair to compare you to others that are saying they have a savings when they do have, uh, other funds to be able to draw upon. And that's even in with the probate court judge, all, all those others. I have said over and over again since I've been on this board, I, I, we need, at this time, it is even more critical that we have folks with the knowledge that's needed to be able to analyze our budget in detail to make sure that we take care of the base and the backbone, which is service. And yes, we did give the raise to the first responders, and actually, I made a motion for the ten percent. It was just based upon finance. They were breaking it up. But it is ten percent. It is ten percent, and that does cause more work also on you. So, I understand that, and I support it wholeheartedly. But we got a lot we got to work through, but what you're bringing before us today, you have my support.
Ma'am?
Commissioner Davis. Go ahead.
I, 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 I know that this board is about to take the vote, and regardless of the outcome of the vote, or let me not say that, not regardless of the outcome of the vote. I just want to do the best job that I can, and I need this board to support me in doing that. That's all that I'm really asking.
Yes, I, I'd like to make, I don't know if it's, should we should do a motion, but I think we should strongly consider giving our department heads, especially our solicitor D A, um, control of their budget to where they can move money as they see fit. I think we need to have some kind of policy adjustment to where, um, we give them a budget and they begin to, um, maneuver funds within their budget as they need.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
And I go back to something that was previously stated. I don't believe we should be in a position here of having to hear about every employee's raise in these departments. I don't think we have, we are equipped with much of the knowledge that they have nor to do this. Once I see a, a realignment of your staff, I am, I am having complete confidence that you know what you're talking about, that you know what you're doing. And I just think we should have a discussion where we begin to look at some kind of policy, policy on budgetary flexibility for these departments.
I don't think anybody's questioning the ability of our solicitor.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
But I would like for our attorney to come forth and tell us so everybody will understand what that process is and why. I guess, well, anyway, the budgetary process and that elected officials come through and, and again, I'll, what we do as policymakers and that kind of thing. And, and how, I think it was suggestion that we change it and.
Yes.
Um, I think maybe what might be more appropriate is that we maybe use a work session to talk about what, um, that issue. And, because rather than me, because not every, not every elected official can be treated the same way.
Correct.
So, rather than me just giving a blanket thing and then there's misunderstanding, I think it might be best to move that topic to, um, uh, work session and we can flesh out, and then the board can decide what you want to do as far as policy on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move with the motion on the floor.
Call for the question.
I haven't called. Call for the question. And so, like you said, we can talk about it at the work session, discuss it from there, and like you said, di, um, different, um, elected officials have different ways that we have to do it, and then we can come to a conclusion from there. But I'd like to move to the question and.
All right, well, the question's been called. Is there a second on the question?
I've already seconded the question.
It's already been seconded.
I hadn't called for it, but now that, now that I'm clear that it's, it's been seconded, and those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
No, this is on second. This is the, the, um, on the question. Now, we're going to go to the, uh, to the motion. It's unanimous to go for the calling of the question. Now, we're going to the motion on the, uh, request.
But, Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe there was already a first and a second on the, on the item, agenda item, is what I was stating.
You are correct.
We just needed to take the vote.
Discussion on it. But, okay, the question, the motion and question, the motion and the second has already been had on this, and we had a discussion. So, at this time, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
I think that was, what was yours, Commissioner?
Nay.
Okay, three, two, it fails, but Mr. Brooks, get with us for this, uh, budgetary process and find a way how you can use that ARPA money in the interim, and we'll see what we can do about trying to make, uh, get you where you need to be. Just have, just have that discussion with, with CFO, sir.
For public safety, I do hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item of board appointments.
First board appointment is to the Ethics Board. Ms. Ashley Wright, appoint, appointment on the Board of Ethics ended January of twenty twenty-two. This appointment is in January, if every year begins with District One. This year's appointment comes from District Two.
This appointment is in January, if every year begins with District One, this year's appointment comes from District Two. Commissioner Anderson, you have a recommendation for us?
What about Hamper?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's been a long night already. I do apologize, Commissioner Hamper. Do you have a recommendation?
Uh yes, I would like to appoint Mr. Robert Bell for this board.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any questions? Hearing numbers?
Yes. Uh the, the Library Board, uh Mr. Bell, is he still um? He's in District Three?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure for the, for a second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is the Library Board. Dietra Poindexter, term will expire February first, twenty twenty-two. On the Library Board, the new appointment begins February first, twenty twenty-two, and expires February first, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Dietra Poindexter to the Library Board.
Is there a second? Uh sucking the motion or any questions?
Ms. Poindexter is an elected official.
To what?
She's a over conservation something. Does that have any impact? Or no, I don't know.
All right.
And I thought she was resigned, I don't know.
She didn't resign.
All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Four one with Commissioner Franklin, uh opposing. Next board appointment is the Library Board, Ms. Deborah Jester has resigned from the Library Board. The new appointment will begin immediately and expire October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Hamper.
I would like to hold it, again, some couple folk are pondering it.
Madam, hold it till our next meeting. Next board appointment, Veterans Advisory Board, this appointment is to replace Mr. Paul Winfrey, who passed away. The new appointment will begin immediately and expire June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Franklin.
Uh yes, I would like to hold this because the person that was recommended does not reside in the district.
Madam Clerk, hold till the next meeting. Next appointment is also to the Ethics Board, Ms. Karen Sullivan. Uh term will expire on the Board of Ethics, February second, twenty twenty-two. This appointment is a recommendation of Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. The new term will begin February second, twenty twenty-two, and will expire February second, twenty twenty-six. I'll make the uh motion here from the chamber to uh reappoint her, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next appointment is also to the Ethics Board, Ms. Tiffany, Tiffany Jones, term will expire on the board, February second, twenty twenty-two. This appointment is a recommendation of the Clayton County NAACP. New term will begin February second, twenty twenty-two, and will expire February second, twenty twenty-six. I have not heard uh from the NAACP, so let's hold that till the next meeting.
Point of clarity.
Mm-hmm.
You all, um and maybe it's just not showing here, but when I asked about Robert Bell, what what board was he appointed to again?
Ethics.
Ethics, okay, because um, okay, I got it. I got it, I see it, thank you.
Next appointment is to the Ethics Board as well, uh Mr. Samuel Dixon resigned from Clayton County Board of Ethics, July first, twenty twenty-one. This appointment is a recommendation of Clayton State University. Uh new term will begin February second, twenty twenty-two, expire February second, twenty twenty-six. Spoke with uh Dr. Stewart, Clayton State, and he's uh still working on it, so we will hold that until the next board meeting as well. Mr. Reed, do we need executive session?
Yes, sir, on litigation only.
All right, I'll make the motion, go into executive session, litigation only. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Good night. All right, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I'll suck, uh second by Commissioner Davis, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed and police, take them all together.
First is a settlement agreement uh between Jessica Lewis and Clayton County, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Senior Services, and Sandra McConnell uh relating to an accident that occurred on or about September twenty-third, twenty twenty, at or near the intersection of Georgia State Route Three, Terra Boulevard and Terra Road in Clayton County in the amount of uh seventy-five thousand dollars um to resolve this case. The next is a settlement agreement between um Van Trin and Lang V. Cow in Clayton County uh civil actions, twenty twenty-one CV zero zero nine zero three dash oh nine and twenty twenty-one CV zero zero nine zero one dash eleven. Both of those resolved for the total amount of thirty thousand dollars, and that is related to an accident that occurred on or about March fourteenth, twenty nineteen. And also that will be the resolution of those cases. The next is a property damage case related to payee a citizens' bank with the claimant Latoya Simpson related to an accident that occurred on um June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at Cameron Road on uh relating to Officer, uh Tony, Code Enforcement Officer Tony Smith, and this is a property damage claim in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. And finally, is a um waiver and a release that's been entered into uh with um PGV Advisors LLC and Sam Data uh in Clayton County, Georgia, related to payment of an invoice in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, which represents the final payment for contract two, twenty twenty zero, 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 seven PSA nineteen dash one, one, zero that was entered into on or about the eighteenth day of June, twenty nineteen. And with all of these requesting that the Chief Financial Officer has um can amend the budget to reflect inappropriate revenue source and expenses being required under each of those agreements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll suck it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Good night.